Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council meeting for May the 21st. I believe we have Councilmember Glover with us on the telephone. Are you there, Chris?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All of the other council members are here, live and in person. The first item on our agenda for this study session is to review the items on the agenda for tonight's council meeting. So, council, if you could please refer to that document. There's a lot on the agenda tonight. Item three are various liquor licenses. Four is various purchase contracts. Item five are various resolutions. I'll note that included in item five is item 5L, which is a project we're very excited about. This is the million square feet of Class A office space that will be being located next to the Sheraton. We're excited with the wonderful proposal that Lincoln Property brought forward. So, I just want to congratulate everyone involved in this. This is really going to be a great entryway to our city and a real point of pride, and Lincoln's other projects speak for themselves in terms of the quality that they're bringing to our city. So, congratulations. Also, this is obviously a very strategic property. I know that Lincoln will work closely with the Cubs to work out issues related to parking and spring training and all the good problems that having very successful facilities cause. So, thank you for -- we look forward to that great partnership emerging as well. But congratulations to everyone involved in that. Mr. Freeman, would you like to add to that? I know you've been very involved. This is your district, and it's a -- I saw another beautiful rendering that came out today. What a great project this is going to be.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I've had the opportunity to work with Lincoln Properties during the process, as well as Boyer. And, you know, both applicants and developers are very qualified. We pushed for certain things, and Lincoln Properties came back with the best proposal, as well as the Class A office square feet that we look forward to. And also, that means jobs in the community. So, with the amount of jobs and the build-out, I'm really excited about it. I like the water features as well. I think that's an integral part of the building component. So, thanks. Thanks to the colleagues for support on that as well.
So, this will remain on our consent agenda unless someone from the public pulls it off, but it's -- it couldn't just slide through without being -- some mention being made of it, because we're really excited about this project. So, congratulations to everyone involved. And I know our Economic Development Department and Mr. Jeb Geniak worked hard on this as well, so congratulations to them. Item six is the introduction of various ordinances. Seven is -- yes, Mr. Thompson. Okay, thank you, Mr. Thompson.
On item seven, Mayor, I'd like to just to make sure that I throw out there that we need to be cognizant of the land uses around our airports, Gateway and Falcon both, especially Gateway with the potential for Skybridge AZ, that we really take a look at the development and the growth that we're allowing, not only on the inner loop, but around the airport in general. As that shifts, it's going to shift more towards a cargo-type airport over time, and cargo aircraft are not the Airbus A360s. They're much noisier aircraft, and so I don't -- I'm not necessarily sure that this item seven and the land use restrictions really takes into account Skybridge and what potential that has on our -- on Gateway Airport and development in the area. So, I just want to make sure that we're cognizant of that and that our P&amp;Z group and our boards and committees are looking at this from the perspective of having AZ Labs -- or not AZ Labs, sorry, Skybridge AZ here in the future.
Okay. So, you're okay with it being on the consent agenda, but just having made that expression. Okay, thank you. Other items not on the consent agenda. Currently, we have several items. The Town Center Improvement District, zoning case under Agenda Item 10. I know there's been some discussion offline regarding this zoning case. Is -- are we okay with continuing to put it -- have the hearing today, Mr. Thompson?
Mayor, I think it would be good to put this on consent and then move this forward for continuance, to give both parties another 30 days to sit down and have the discussion and come to a conclusion on their discussions over the flight easements. I'm leery of doing another 30 days, because it's been four years. I'm not sure another 30 days is going to get where they want to be. I'm hopeful that it will, knowing that in 30 days, this is coming back for potentially approval by council. So, I'm hopeful that both parties can sit down and work to conclusion on their easements and so forth and get this to resolution, so it doesn't come back to us for another decision, because we will make the decision for you if you can't make it on your own. So, I'm all in favor of moving this forward and continuing it for another 30 days to move it to the June 18th meeting.
Does that require a motion? Yes, but I think, Mr. Smith, we need a vote on this to move it, to continue it to the June 18th.
That vote will come upstairs, but is there a direction here to put it on the consent? So, it'll be right into consent, and if somebody wants to pull it off consent, they can pull it off, but it can be right in consent upstairs. That's the direction, council.
For the June 18th.
Or continues to that date specific.
Okay, so the -- just so we're clear, Kevin, we're going to -- Agenda Item 10, which is actually Agenda Items 10A through D, it will move to the --
Any.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't keep going. Look at that. 10 through -- 10A through E will be on the -- as a continuance on the consent agenda until June the 18th. Okay? So, that is back on the consent, but it's as a continuance. And then there we have the public hearing, Agenda Item 11, on city-owned utility rates, and a Item 12 is a capital improvement hearing, and 13 is the budget. So, we'll take care of those things upstairs. Any questions or concerns about those items, council? All right, Mr. Glover, any -- do you feel okay about what we just did?
Yes, no questions, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is Agenda Item 2A, to hear a presentation and provide direction on zoning ordinance requirements for dimensions on single-residence garages. Mr. Wesley, good to have you with us.
Mayor, council, if you'd be here on such a busy day. The subject is garage-sized dimensions. This has become a topic of discussion with us recently. You do have a case on your agenda for introduction tonight in consideration in a couple of weeks, and we have a couple others in the wings come behind this, where some of the developers are looking at -- we have currently in our zone ordinance standards, which is a 20-foot-wide, 22-foot-deep garage size, and requesting some deviations to that to reduce those a little bit. So, we thought it'd be good to have a general discussion with council about our current standard, why we have it, and see if there's any direction from council, if maybe we should take a look at those requirements and maybe look at a modification to those. So, prior to 2011, we had a guideline that staff followed in working with applicants of a garage size of 20 feet by 20 feet. It wasn't an ordinance requirement at that time. When we updated the zoning ordinance in 2011, it was one of the things we looked at, and we had been seeing some issues and problems around the community with garage sizes that we felt were a little bit too small, not accommodating for the size of vehicles that we were seeing, and other things were going on, such as the water heaters and sometimes the storage of the solid waste barrels and so forth in the garage, causing people then to park in the driveway more than they might want to, or we'd want to see, or out into the streets, those types of things. We wanted to ensure that the garage stayed usable as best we could. We know people do what they're going to do with their garages, and a lot of times they do turn into storage, extra storage spaces, but their primary purpose is to provide that covered parking space for the residential units. So, we had a number of things we were looking at with that and coming up with that 20-by-22 foot standard. And that concern became even more as we were looking at smaller lots and smaller houses, a lot of times seeing those with no driveways, and reducing the ability to park. Then, if you fill up your garage, where do you park? And not having as much room for storage in a yard, because the yard sizes are getting so much smaller. So, that drove the staff again to that recommendation inclusion in the ordinance that council approved, the 20-by-22 garage size. This illustration just gives you some basic information about typical car sizes, widths and lengths, and some illustrations that we use to help us come up with the sizes that we did recommend. You can see that kind of that minimum dimension for vehicles when they open the doors, you need around 13 feet or so to really get the door open, so you can get in and out, you can load things in and out. You get the longer vehicles and just have some room to maneuver around the vehicle, again, much less get things in and out to provide for the water heaters, gets up to that 21, 22-foot length in some of the bigger vehicles. We did look at what the other cities around us do and find that we are indeed at the high end of what other cities are requiring for garage dimensions. Some don't have any specific standards in their ordinance. They operate off of some guidelines like we used to and have some recommendations along with that for guest parking or some storage facilities that might be required depending upon that garage size. But closest to us at this point is Queen Creek with the 20-by-20, and others are smaller. Here's a specific request that is before us, that again, council will be considering in a couple of weeks. You can see that the changes aren't real big necessarily from what the standards are, but they are reducing that size, and in staff's opinion, starting to affect the functionality and usability of the garage for what it was intended to be for. And so, that got us to the recommendation for denial on that particular case. But now, that's where we are, and again, wanted to bring you into the loop on that and see what comments, directions you might have for staff as we look at this issue and see, again, is there desire on the party council for us to take a more extensive look and potentially propose modifications to our current standards.
Thank you, John. Mr. Thompson.
John, thanks for bringing this presentation up. This is primarily hitting, I believe, Councilmember Luna in my districts with all the growth and the issues that we're having with, you know, the shorter driveways and so forth, and wanting the larger garages. And I know that we've had -- that I've had at least two or three subdivisions or developments in my district where, at the end of the day, they, you know, it was caught after it gotten through, you know, the process. You know, I started looking at this, and I visited with some of our zoning friends, and as I started looking at this, it dawned on me that maybe we're a little too stringent on some of our things. And again, it goes back to this menu of items that I talked about four years ago of, you know, if we're intending to use garages as storage, but we want to use a smaller garage, then the developer should be able to build a smaller garage, but on top of that, do something from this menu item, whether you're putting storage in or whether you're requiring, you know, an access to an attic where they can put, you know, store boxes and different things like that. So, get off of the one-dimensional and think outside the box for a little bit of what can we do to accommodate the development community, to give them certainty on what we will approve, and at the same time, ensuring that our residents have the capability to do what they want to do in their garages, whether it's store stuff, park their vehicles in it, what have you. I know I've looked at diagrams of forum parking, a full-size suburban can fit into a 20-by-19 garage or a 20-by-20 garage. You know, about the only thing you can't fit in a garage of that dimension is like a Ford F-350. But I think it's time that we start looking at our ordinances and our codes and getting them more up-to-date with what's actually being built and what people are wanting from their house. You know, if we're really focused on everyone using their garage as a storage, then quit approving storage facilities on every corner in my district. You know, if we're wanting people, if we want all the cookie-cutter homes and everything to look exactly alike, continue to make everything exactly alike. But I'm not interested in that. I like to have -- I like to be able to drive from one end of the city to the other end of the city and know that we're doing something different than everyone else. And I think sometimes we get caught in the -- caught up in that our ordinances, you know, say that it has to be, you know, 20-by-21 or what have you, and it's -- and we stick to that come hell or high water, and we don't leave any leniency for our development community and for trying new things. And so, I'm all in favor of, let's look at what's out there. Let's look at what we can actually do. Let's hear from the zoning attorneys and from the development community of what they're doing in other communities, and see if we can start incorporating some of that into our ordinances and what we do and how we build.
So, Mayor, and those are great ideas. One of the -- there's always kind of like the push and pull of these policies. So, if we need to make them smaller, we can. I think the idea was to have a place for the cars to get off the streets. I can tell you some of those other communities I saw that have none. They're very much struggling now with these small six-pack subdivisions, and their cars are parked all over the streets, and they can't get their, you know, their fire trucks through the neighborhoods. So, that's kind of the trade-off. So, maybe the trade-off is if you want a smaller garage, then you've got to provide more dedicated off-street parking. So, we could -- if that's -- I mean, I'm just -- it's not as simple as saying, well, it's just.
Well, that's exactly what my menu of items.
Okay. So, as long as we have.
That's what John's working on, I guess, you know, or what we have a consultant working on now, is preparing that menu of items.
Right.
To say, if you can't do A, then you have to do 1, 2, 3, or 4, you know? So, if you, if you want a narrower street instead of our 25-foot width, and fire can't get a truck down, which I argue that one, because you have this giant bumper on there that you can push just about anything out of the way with.
Yeah.
But if you, if you want to do a 21-foot wide street, but fire pitches a foot about it, then force more off-site or force -- or have one of the menu items that you have to have rear access, or that you have to have a sprinkler system throughout the housing units, you know, that fire can charge to help put out the fires if there is one. So, there's a different, different things that we can do without always being inside the box. Let's look outside the box and figure out what we can do that's different.
Just don't use the word fire sprinklers.
Well, it wouldn't be a requirement, it'd be an option.
So, John, just to remind us who we are. We have a pending zoning case that is being submitted with garages that do not meet our requirements, so presumably, staff will recommend denial of that project.
We have, and it's coming to you with a 3-2 vote by P&amp;Z.
3-2 in favor?
3-2 in favor.
And is it -- it's not on our agenda today?
You're introducing it tonight for two weeks.
All right. So, two weeks from now, we'll have to decide if we're okay with approving a subdivision that doesn't comply with our garage standards and.
And there's more to come. And we get the exception, but it doesn't give us time to have this kind of menu of like, well, if you want to do that, then show us that you're going to make up the difference with off-site parking, which means you're going to have to take lots that you might have been selling for a home, and now you're going to have to provide four or five parking spaces on the street. And that's what we -- so, we're kind of pausing here. It's like we could defer these projects and go work on this policy and bring it back to council, or do we try to take these one-offs now and try to manage them now? Or that's kind of what we're -- we just want to make council know that this is -- it's coming, and it's right in front of us now. We want to make sure you're aware of the -- this won't be -- those will be the first of a few others to come, so.
I see Susan Demmett's in the audience. Susan, I don't know if you want to come up and speak on this, but, I mean, this is really your client's project, if I remember correctly. Sorry to put you in the hot seat.
She gets time and a half for TV time.
Is it on?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. I'll just pre-brief. Susan Demmett with Gamage &amp; Burnham. So, you do have an agenda that's being -- an agenda item being introduced tonight for Woodside Homes, where we've been working with staff and with Councilman Thompson for -- since March regarding their application. They had a project that was very far down the road when we discovered the garage dimension issue, and so we had to -- we had to pause back in March to look at alternatives to deal with, you know, could we conform to the city's garage requirements? What kind of changes would that necessitate to floor plans, elevations? At that point, we had final plats already submitted to the city. We'd been through the design review process as far as our site plan and preliminary plat had already been approved. And so, we sat down with staff and looked at the issues and how we could deal with them. We have a smaller lot product, and we also have cluster home product that we're dealing with. And at the end of the day, we were able to get to a point where we felt we had reached a good compromise between the ordinance, the hard rigid ordinance standard, which is 20-by-22 for whether you have a 5,000-square-foot house or a 1,500-square-foot house. And so, we got to the point where we had a variety of garage sizes, I guess is where we ended up, and we had homes with, you know, we saw the sort of menu of options got worked into the solution that we have brought forward, which includes dedicated storage spaces. We have more parking than's required throughout our community. We have in the single -- some of the traditional single-family homes, we have garages that do meet -- we have a number of the garage sizes and floor plan options that meet your standard. We have some that do not. And so, we felt that, you know, in this particular instance, we were working hard to provide that balance between what the rigid ordinance standard would require and really the needs of the development community. When you have a smaller home and smaller product, your livable square footage is really at a premium. That's what the homebuyers want. You know, we have garages, as Councilman Thompson stated, that you could park an F-150 pickup in. You could park two of them in each of these garages. And so, we looked at a way to address garage size, parking the large majority of vehicles, making sure we had dedicated storage spaces or opportunity for homeowners to have sheds and things like that, and then as well as ample on-street parking for these houses. And so, I, you know, we felt that what we're bringing forward now is more of a model as to how the city should address this issue in the future and work with the developers to find a balance between a rigid standard and, you know, sort of no standard at all. And we felt we've kind of come to the middle. And I think you will see this issue arise again and again. I've had a couple of other clients in the last month in some of your master plan communities that have had this same issue, and it's typically with smaller lot product. It's not necessarily the traditional single-family homes.
I have to admit, I'm pessimistic about this. I've talked with some folks who live in Gilbert neighborhoods, and Gilbert doesn't regulate the size of garages, and so there are some Gilbert communities with very small garages. And when there are people visiting those homes, as a result, the width of the home is compromised, the width of the lot. And so, you know, on Mother's Day or on a Sunday afternoon when people are visiting or when there's a baby shower, you know, the street is shut down essentially. And so, I'm -- I think the reason we have a box is sometimes because it's good to have some minimum widths so that we can negotiate in and out of neighborhoods. So, I need to go on a field trip. I need to see what these neighborhoods look like. I need to see if we lower the standard in Mesa and give flexibility this way, if people aren't going to be cursing city councils, you know, in future years for creating a neighborhood that is so congested with cars that it's a bad place to live. So, I'm pessimistic, but I will commit to being open-minded and visiting some neighborhoods and looking at it. But I -- you need to do some convincing when it comes to me, I'm afraid. So, if this is on the agenda for two weeks from now, I need to hurry and go visit a neighborhood so that I have something to rely on when I vote in two weeks.
And we can certainly provide some suggestions, and I think it's, you know, it's a nuanced discussion, because when you do have to look at the communities in totality. And, I mean, it is the concern of the homebuilders as well, that you -- they want to have their residents have an ample room for their vehicles and storage. I mean, the market drives a lot of that, and we certainly understand that there have been some issues in some communities. I think you'll find, in this particular instance, the reductions that we're asking for are -- there really is -- they're nominal in our view, and they are offset by some other things that we've offered as a trade-off to address exactly some of the, you know, the items that you've addressed. And it's usually, again, I mean, you have -- you will always have the homeowner that decides to repurpose their garage for something other than vehicles, you know, and they will store, you know, everything and under the sun in their garage. And, I mean, you'll never be able to prevent that, but the idea here is that you have a garage that has a width and a depth that will accommodate the large majority of types of vehicles that people drive, that you have room for a water heater, that you have room for the Christmas ornaments and all those things, either in the garage or somewhere dedicated in the home, and you have parking, whether it's on, you know, in the driveway or on the street, to accommodate those things. And we have a, you know, we have a presentation that we can certainly give in two weeks as well, that we did at Planning Commission, that walks you through sort of this specific instance.
So, the plan that we're going to see in two weeks, does it have some alternative parking? Is there additional parking that, you know, are there lots that are set aside and now become, you know, small parking lots in the middle of a residential neighborhood? Have you done some of these alternative parking?
So, Mayor and council, without getting too deep into that specific case, because we're here really to talk about.
That's true. Okay, that's not on our agenda, so we won't discuss that case.
They have, as Ms. Demmett pointed out, they have done some of those things to address some of those concerns. I guess, coming back to where we were, you know, staff, the main purpose of the garage is to store the vehicles, provide people the safe, convenient place to park their vehicles, be able to use them. And because they are kind of tight to begin with, even a few inches, as you start to give up those few inches, they start to make that garage more unusable for its primary purpose. And so, when you can't use it for its primary purpose, then you start using it for other purposes. And we want to do the best job we can to make sure it's as usable as it can be for that primary purpose. Again, people will make their individual choices from there, but if it doesn't work to start with, it makes it maybe more likely to going to make those other choices for how to use it. So, I guess, again, we're looking for any direction from council as to whether you'd like us to come back with some other alternatives at some point, for that to be something we would be studying and looking at.
I think I've expressed my point of view. I'm open to conceding them, but I'm leaning towards being a no vote on this.
Thank you. Thank you for appearing. I'd like to see some alternatives as well. We have a lot of issues. We have six-packs. People don't park their cars in the garage. They're using it for storage. So, we need to look at what alternatives are possible. My concern is public safety. We want to make sure our roads are clear enough for a fire truck to go through, and so that's always a concern. That's the first thing I look at. We want to make sure. But we -- I am finding that they don't use it to park their vehicles, they're using it for storage. So, we've got to find a balance there. So, if -- I don't know if I'm answering your request, but that's a concern that I hear from my residents. They complain because they can only park on one side of the street. I'm concerned about the fire trucks going into those neighborhoods and not being able to put out a fire. So, those are the kind of issues that I have to grapple with, but, you know, if there are some alternatives, I'm willing to look at that as well.
So, Mayor and council, we could bring back the specifics of this proposal, so you could at least see kind of maybe a real-life example where those trade-offs, what they look like, and see if you feel like that's going far enough. And then, maybe that would be a way to kind of suggest looking at a policy that allows us to have as an alternative, you know, if you can't park your car. What I'm concerned about is smaller garages and shorter driveways. What that means is now the resident's not even parking off -- they're parking on the street, too. So, let us maybe keep moving this forward, show us an example, and then you can kind of see where the trade-offs are, and we can give some suggestions about what we see as examples to how to mitigate against the very things you're talking about, right? It's really narrower streets with lots of cars on both sides of the street and making it very convenient.
So, it may result in a suggestion for a continuance of your zoning case if we can't get that kind of due diligence done within the next two weeks, just FYI. I'll throw that out there. I don't think we want to rush into building what might be a bad neighborhood.
Well, yeah. We certainly don't want you to feel like you're doing that either. What I will say is this, you know, again, this issue arose very late in the process, and the final plats for this project are actually on your agenda tonight as well. And so, which not -- doesn't necessarily speak to the home design, and the garage decides it themselves, but, you know, we tried to work very hard to tee this up so that it was dealt with, you know, could be dealt with at the same time. We'd be happy to come, you know, meet with you between now and the council meeting on the 4th as well, and or present at a study session, if you've got a study session, that you'd like us to come give our presentation on what trade-offs we have implemented in this specific instance, because we do feel like we've worked hard to find a good compromise.
I think Susan's probably been a little bit nice, too, because our staff screwed up on this just as much. And again, it was the nth hour after everything had been done that I think both parties realized that there was an issue, and both parties sat down to try to come to a resolution on this. So, it wasn't, it wasn't one or the other. There was not a blame game. It's just trying to come to a compromise so that the whole process doesn't have to start completely over. But it brought to light, because Mary Kay Homes did the exact same thing at Guadalupe and Haws, one that we approved already. They had to go back. They were breaking ground. They've had to completely stop construction and go back and redesign their entire subdivision now, because the dimensions are off, because we won't accept their garages. So, it's, this is happening more and more and more and more. So, to me, it seems like something that we really ought to be looking at. You know, to speak to the narrower streets, we have that issue in Eastmark. You know, in fact, when Eastmark couldn't come to a compromise with staff, John, if I remember, they said, you know what, we'll just make it a private, private street, we'll maintain it. And now, you have a 21-foot street, a wide street inside Eastmark. That's a private street that they maintain. So, that's an alternative. Again, it goes back to the menu of items that you can do. Again, it goes back to the menu of items that, that you can do. So, Susan, sorry to put you on the hot spot, but thank you. But I think it'd be good if we were to listen to or see Susan's, you know, the, the presentation that she gave to, to staff and to the committee, P&amp;Z Committee. I think it serves well and really talks specifically about the issues that we're having in Mesa or that the development community is having in Mesa.
Yes, Jeremy.
John, what is, what's staff's recommendation on this?
On this specific case, it was for denial of the modification. We felt that they didn't provide enough offset in the PAD--
Okay. And P&amp;Z was a three and two--
Three, two in favor of the modification, correct?
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I'm happy to look into it. I do need to have a field trip at some point though before I, I need to touch it and see it and see if it, how I feel about it. Okay, thank you very much. Council, anything else on this? The next item on our agenda is Item 2B, "Hear a Presentation and Provide Direction on the Needs for a Library Facility in Southeast Mesa." Heather, welcome.
Mayor, Council, I'm Heather Wolf, Library Director, and beside me is Polly Bonnet, our Red Mountain Branch Coordinator. And we're here to talk to you today about a consultant's report on facility needs assessment done for the southeast Mesa area. As you know, part of the Imagine Mesa process, there was community interest in a new library for southeast Mesa. So, following Councilor's direction, we did request and receive four proposals for, four proposals to conduct a facility needs assessment. And Providence Associates, a national consultant firm, was selected. We were very fortunate in the consultant who was the lead on our project. Toni Garvey is, has been in the library business. She's been a public administrator, library administrator for 25 years. She was the president of the Public Library Association in 2002 and Librarian of the Year in 2004. She retired as the city librarian from Phoenix Public Library in 2011 and has since been sharing her expertise with libraries across the country. And so, we were very lucky to have her help on this project. She regrets that she's not here to be with you all tonight. She had a prior commitment. So, Polly and I will do our best to present her report and answer any questions you may have. First of all, we asked Providence to answer several questions in the facility needs assessment. The most important question was, is there a need for library services in southeast Mesa? And if the answer to that was yes, then we asked, where is the optimal location and what is the optimal size? So, in order to answer those questions, Ms. Garvey gathered and analyzed data from the county, the city, and the library, and she conducted surveys with the citizens and focus groups. Using data provided from demographic reports, a reporting and mapping service, Ms. Garvey found that within a four-mile ring around Ellsworth and Ray, the community is projected to increase by 8.4% from 2017 to 2022, resulting in a population of over 68,000 people. The population of this area will be more highly educated than the current population of Mesa. 94.5% will have a high school diploma or higher versus 87.5% of Mesa residents overall. In addition, 34% are projected to have a bachelor's degree or higher compared to 24.9%. The median household income is also projected to be higher in this area, and Ms. Garvey also consulted with the Maricopa Association of Governments, or MAG, mapping tool, and the results were very similar in the projections. With data clearly showing that there is growth in southeast Mesa, the next step was to examine the capacity of Mesa Public Library to absorb all those new users. And I know you guys are on a time crunch here, so I'll go fast, but please stop me if you have any questions. So, this chart shows Mesa compared to our local peer libraries in Maricopa County, and you can see that Mesa has the second highest circulation per capita, but we have the smallest collection, the fewest staff, and the least amount of library space per capita. Ms. Garvey also compared Mesa to several libraries across the country. She selected these three library systems based on their similarities to Mesa in terms of median household income, the educational attainment of the residents, and racial/ethnic diversity. Again, in comparison with our national peers, Mesa has the highest circulation per capita, second to the smallest collection, the fewest staff. And then, there's a little note here about Pima County. They offer slightly smaller amount of square feet per capita currently, but they are in the process of expanding one of their branches, and they have on the books plans to build a new library and complete a second branch expansion all by 2020, at which point they will surpass us. So, to find out how people currently use their library and what they would like to see in the near future, a survey was made available online and in the four libraries. In addition, several community conversations were conducted in southeast Mesa. Over 500 people participated in the surveys and conversations. In viewing the surveys, Ms. Garvey found while most survey respondents live within five miles of the Mesa branch they use the most often, 40% of Express Library users and 29% of Red Mountain users live between six and 10 miles of the branch. And to provide some perspective, the Express Library is eight miles from Ellsworth and Ray. The nearest full-service branch is Red Mountain, and that's about 13 miles away. In addition, survey responses were analyzed by branch. Responses were fairly uniform across locations with one exception. When respondents were asked to rank the changes most important to them, only Express Library users expressed the need for a new library building, and those who used Dobson Ranch, which is one-third the size of Red Mountain, they ranked a renovated or expanded branch as second in their priority of needs. So, based on the projected population for the city of Mesa in general and the southeast area in particular, as well as the capacity of Mesa Public Library to absorb new users, Ms. Garvey concluded that a new branch library is needed in the general area of Ellsworth and Ray. And applying the library's current per capita space allotment of .38 square feet to the MAG projections of almost 90,000 residents in southeast Mesa by 2030, a new branch library of approximately 35,000 square feet is recommended. She noted that while that alone will not significantly impact the per capita amount of library space Mesa provides for its residents, it will serve the southeast Mesa area for the near future. This next slide shows what our community would like to see in a new library, and this was the best part of the community conversations for me. It was a lot of fun to listen to them share what they wanted to see. I expected to hear most of these recommendations, but I want to note something that really caught my attention. These residents wanted their library to be a destination, not just a warm and welcoming space. They wanted it to be a destination. And they talked passionately about it being a place of civic pride. So, I thought that was really telling. In fall 2019, Queen Creek Unified School District is planning to open a new high school at Ellsworth and Ray. This slide shows land that the school district has set aside on the property for a possible public library. And this last slide shows that it would accommodate about a 23,000-square-foot facility. And if Council and the community were to decide to move this project forward on the high school property, we'll work hard to design the space for maximum benefit and uses. Questions?
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Heather, thank you for this. I think Mr. Brady would probably attest to, to me beating him up over the last four years of when am I going to get the librarians out east Mesa? And then, having to tell the, the citizens that probably not anytime soon, you know, because we are, we are such a growing district that we, we need a library. You know, we either drive, you know, five or six miles up the road to, to Red Mountain or we have to drive over to Gilbert to use the, to use the, and that's just from my house at Power and Guadalupe, or we have to drive over to the county library in, in Gilbert. You know, so for the folks that live in Bellevia or the folks that live in Eastmark, it's probably another, you know, it's 30 minutes to, 30 to 40 minutes to the nearest library, which, which is crazy. So, I'm hopeful that we can, that we can partner with the school district, with Queen Creek School District, to perhaps build this. I know I've made a phone call to Supervisor Chukri, and for some reason, when you ask for money, they don't have a tendency to want to call you back. But I, but I've looked at it and said, well, you know, from a citizen's standpoint in Mesa, we're paying, we're paying into our property taxes and into our secondary property taxes a piece of the county as well. I think it's on our sales tax too. We're paying into the county for libraries, and we don't have anything really within the city of Mesa that's a county library. And so, I think, you know, there, I'm hopeful that there will be something from the county, a partnership of some type, because we do need something for the citizens out in District 6, especially the far southeast portion of the district. So, thank you again for your presentation. This is timely and perfect.
Thank you very much.
Jeremy.
Heather, I just want to say thank you. I know your team has worked hard on expanding the coding program and stuff in the library, so I'm really enjoying seeing what you guys are doing over there.
Thank you, Councilmember.
There, just another point real quick. Heather, give us an update, because we do have the Mesa Express Library at Power and Baseline. But give us the status of that, because that's the only, that's the closest thing to a southeast presence we have. But what's the, what's the anticipate, what's the forecast, what's the future of that site?
So, Mayor, Council, what Mr. Brady is referring to is we are on a month-to-month lease at that space. Because of the sort of up and down of that particular retail mall, we have made that decision, actually, they made that decision to go to a month-to-month lease. So, we are in the space, and we hope to be there for a year, but we are looking to see where else we can go if we should, we'll have 30 days' notice. So, if we have to leave, either because they've asked us to leave or because we make the decision to leave. So, currently, we're on a month-to-month lease.
So, just understanding that. And then, my, just one final point. We really appreciate Queen Creek School District looking at creating a partnership with the city at their site. The only thing that we may need to, if, if we were to move forward and we were to get support, one of the conversations we may need to have with them is the site that they've allocated is, we say we need 35,000 square feet. The footprint was 23,000.
23,000.
So, we're not, that's kind of, well, we could go vertical or down, either one. So, we, we need to think about whether or not that's maximizes, it's a pretty small footprint. But again, we can have more discussions. This is a project that was identified in Imagine Mesa, had a lot of popularity. We have put it on our list of projects that we'll present to the Council just as a possible potential project for a possible bond election also, that we can continue to have conversations about later this month. So, we just wanted you to hear though, you, the Council had asked us to do the feasibility study. That's been concluded. So, I think we're, with Queen Creek School District, we're right in the zone of Ellsworth and Ray, so that's good news. So, now, it's just a matter of whether we move forward or not at this time. So, we just wanted to bring this up to the speed, bring the Council up to speed to where we're on in the discussion, so.
Thank you. I have a quick question. So, would this, this would be joint use with the school district and the city? So, during school hours, high school students would come in and use it as part of their curriculum? And if so, are we, who's staffing it? Is it the city of Mesa librarians? Is it the school district?
So, Mayor, we had some prior conversations when, last July, August timeframe, and there's several different models for shared-use libraries. We don't call them joint use because high school students. So--
Good to see them.
So, we've had, there are several models locally--
You're funnier than you look, Heather. That's good. Okay.
There are several models locally, and we shared with them all the different variations. And I know that they toured several of the libraries, but in case you're interested, Perry High School is a shared-use with the county library district. Then you have Basha and Hamilton, which are part of the Chandler Library System. And then, there's up north, Palomino High School is Scottsdale Public Library Partnership. And then, far north is Boulder Creek, which is in the Anthem District, and that's in county, another county library, shared-use library. So, there are lots of local models, and I've shared with them all of the different staffing, et cetera, models for partnering, because it's, it is a partnership and all that has to be laid out well in advance so everybody knows what they're contributing to the success of the project.
Okay. Thank you, Council. Additional questions? We do have a blue card, so we'd like to invite forward Megan Sterling. Megan, thank you for serving on our library advisory board. Look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Hi, Mayor, Council. Thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this afternoon. My name is Megan Sterling, and I'm representing the City of Mesa Library Advisory Board, many of whom are in attendance as well. You've now heard from Library Director Heather Wolf on the research findings of Toni Garvey of Providence Associates and the many compelling reasons why the massive residential growth in southeast Mesa both needs and deserves a full-service library. As a nine-person library board, we support these findings and strongly urge you to consider funding for a new full-service library in southeast Mesa to serve the dynamic population growth that is projected in that area. Libraries are not an add-on or an afterthought, but rather a dynamic component of a healthy, well-functioning, well-rounded community. At their best, they give access and resources to all and level the playing field for underserved communities and populations. The programming at our Mesa Public Library branches is amazingly creative and innovative. If you haven't seen what they have to offer, this is May's events. Our branches are a perfect example of the essential role that libraries play as community hubs that serve as centers of learning and professional development. There are classes and programs available for library users of all ages and learning opportunities for all kinds of interests. Libraries are also an important driver for economic development and innovation in our community. As you are probably aware, the second ThinkSpot location opened up earlier this year at the main branch. The classes offered at both ThinkSpot locations give entrepreneurs and small business owners an opportunity to try new ideas, interact with other like-minded individuals, and work on their products in a safe space. I'd be remiss to not use part of my three minutes to remind you that we have a fantastic director in Heather and an amazing team of librarians and support staff. They do fantastic work for our community, day in and day out, and they deserve recognition. In closing, we, as a library board, urge you to expand the amazing innovative opportunities that we currently have at other branches into the southeast Mesa community. The population currently there and projected to be there over the next 10 to 20 years deserves it, needs it, and wants it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Megan. Thank you for your service on the library board.
Absolutely.
And we agree with you about Heather and the library staff. Thank you. All right, that concludes Items 2, Item 2B. The next item, 3, is to acknowledge receipt of boards and minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Chris. Chris, you didn't have any questions for the library folks, did you?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, sorry. I neglected to ask you that question earlier. Next item is Item 4, "Hear Reports on Meetings and Conferences Attended." Council, anything you'd like to share with us? Sure. Mr. Freeman, tell us about, I was honored to join with you and the delegation, some of whom are in this room, to go to Burnaby, our sister city, a couple of days ago. Burnaby is a great sister city for the city of Mesa. They're very committed to, to that relationship, and they send a delegation to Mesa on a regular basis, and they really, you can tell they really appreciate the relationship with us. It's a city that we have a lot to learn from. And so, it was fun the last few days to tour what they do and to see ideas from what other cities are doing, many of which are applicable in, in our community. We, I was particularly interested in, we toured their university, and they have an innovation program there with augmented reality--
Artificial intelligence.
--artificial intelligence, all of the things that we're hoping to bring to the ASU program. It was fun to see that and to see all the broad applications. There, there's not a, a discipline you can think of that doesn't have a, a connection to these programs. So, anyway, very educational, and we appreciate the strong relationship we have with Burnaby Canada. It's in the Vancouver area, beautiful community. They're doing a lot of things very, very well. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, one of the things I was impressed with, they are about 35 square miles. They have half the population as we do. They have about a $510 million budget, and they have $980 million in reserve. So, I thought that was pretty phenomenal. Now, they're building vertical. They're currently building high-rises up to 70 stories high. And I thought, well, that's a challenging concept for police and fire to respond. I'm thinking of the public safety side of it. But the things they do creatively to-- But the things they do creatively to incur that their city has a great working budget and their community has a lifestyle that's really unbelievable. And I appreciated learning that, their staff. I was able to travel with Sally Harrison and Mark Garcia, and I guess Mark Hirschberg, he actually didn't make it up there.
He made it to Peoria.
He what?
Made it to Peoria.
Oh, he made it to Peoria. But they were a very hosting city, and we enjoyed being with them. So that was my first time being with them as a sister-city trip, so I thankful, thankful to be invited. And I forgot, Mr. Kavanaugh was a gracious host as well. He's been doing that about 16, 17 years.
Counsel, anything else under meetings and conferences attended? If not, the next item is to review the schedule of future meetings. Mr. Brady?
Yes, just a few announcements. There will be a neighborhood meeting with Council Meredia and the Mesa Police Department on the Thursday, May 24th, discuss crime prevention and updates about issues that are in the southern part of District 3. The meeting will be held at La Casita Recreation Center located at 2719 South Reyes. It begins at 6:30 and will go till 8:30 p.m. Good news for everybody, the city of Mesa pools will open for the summer this Saturday, May 26th. And next, our next study session will be this Thursday, May 24th, at 7:30 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, I did see some notices go out on social media for family passes that can be bought that reduce, makes those swimming pools all the more affordable. So if you're a family like mine that enjoys utilizing the city pools, you ought to look at some season passes at the beginning of the summer. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.